You sure you're here?
Yeah.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman, did that happen?
She, uh, worked.
Alderman was in a deal?
Yes.
Alderman, Kathy Burton? Yes, Alderman Burton, yes.
We have court. Okay, approval of the agenda. What was the name of that?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Won't you take it on very?
Aye.
opposed? Uh, approval of the, what do you want?
Consent agenda.
I think that one, exactly, more than twice, it contains the agenda.
Uh, make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Want me to make it on very?
Aye.
opposed? Uh, we have no color here, we have a public official here, what I had now, Margaret, maybe?
Margaret.
Margaret, Margaret, anyway, what? No unfinished business, no new business, this is all good. Emergency management?
I have nothing.
You have never given a report, you might, I'm just like, you have a report, why don't you do that? You better read up on that stuff. What are you gonna do when you have to get one? Please, report.
Officer Corbett won't be here today, uh, but as I was in your last meeting, but leading up to the last meeting, it seemed like he addressed quite a number of issues with vehicles that have been out and makes a call in motion and, uh, as well as, uh, writing citations.
They moved several cars from that location.
Do they move them from one place to another place?
We have them towed and then pounded.
Oh, good.
Them cars in the long, they married, they're up there, Perry County towing lot somewhere, they're in pounded. It's up to them to go do what they want to, we hold our yard, if they pay it on me or our order, we can have them towed. And then, it's in their hand, that, not the tow company will scrap them or, if it. But, anyway, that's what's going on, won't be going on down here on Nethpe. They've been, it's all they go through the courts.
Good, and then they communicated that, I'm not gonna tell you exactly what day he's gonna be here, 'cause that's kind of up in the air.
Well, it didn't happen.
No, for this.
And showed up to the place, what today, days for.
Going forward, next two weeks, I guess. That's it, I know.
He came here days, about twelve, and that, I don't know why he did here in that time, time I started looking for him, it was on the tour. Okay, that all?
Yes, sir.
But they have been notified and received, they're starting, it may take you about thirty days to get all that done, recording thing, but we're going to go one place at a time. And we'll get ahead of a few more than the rest of them, a fall, fall line, but
Sure.
They'll find them where to put them, start in town. That's how I'm out in the county.
No thanks.
Party, partner?
We've had three calls this month, one medic, one brush fire, uh, fire alarm sounding. Uh, we did fire prevention week yesterday, had head start, uh, like we normally do every year for the little kids up there. That one will go. Uh, the other thing is, is been doing some maintenance at the firehouse, uh, turn around. The weather's starting to break down for mowing season and stuff, we're going into colder weather, so we're gonna be working on our, uh, media room up there, a lot more, uh, getting that all put back, the walls back up and everything. Uh, the other thing is, is, uh, we had the air compressor, our breathing air, evaporized compressor, uh, we had it serviced today. Uh, that's normally a annual thing for us to make sure we get no CO or anything inside our tanks, uh, during it filling it up, so. That's it on my part.
That all?
Yeah, it's all in fire department side.
I'm gonna make sure I turn my phone there. I don't think I hit, I don't know, but I don't go ring. Uh, street department, I, we ain't got much time with the street yet, but a lot of it, he needs to be sure what to do and then he can do it.
Well, there's quite a bit of it, turn around, we need an extra guy, I mean, right now, I'm kinda tired of not being able to work.
But we can, he can fill up hot hole there.
Yeah, yeah, but we need to go back to our one, the gravel field and re asphalt them, so.
Well, I, I, I would offer that, man, I'm, this week I should be done painting my house, so, and I'm around, so if you need an extra hand, it's all possible.
Basically, it's digging them out, four inches deep, turn around, lay an asphalt, but you gotta go to the, uh, over to the asphalt company, order a nut belt and get asphalt and bring it back.
Won't be long, we won't be able to get that.
No, a mile away to that joint.
Way they go. And if you get that bird legs, they're all, they're all dead trying to get them.
You gotta get there five o'clock in the morning, really, until they open.
And is there a vehicle that you guys ordinarily, ordinarily use for that, or is?
Be our dump truck, for air, air break one, CO.
We got a good dump truck.
And once it's brought back, it can sit for a while, it has to use it?
It's gotta be laid the same day. So it's eight hundred something degrees, you watch it sitting inside that bed, and it starts cooling off.
Oh.
And it turn into a hard rock, and you won't be able to get it.
So it's a core?
The only, the only thing, the only thing that you can actually bring back to life is your coal patch, but coal patch don't last as long as asphalt does, so. When you're filling in holes. Now, that Pivotal or whatever I got over here, it's in the shed for pot holes, is basically an asphalt mix, that lasts as longer than normal, but.
We got a terrible bag of that or whatever.
Well, so you need a full crew, you need someone to drive it, you need two guys?
Yeah, it'd be two, three guys, just spread and, you gotta dig, you gotta, so basically what we normally do is we try to dig out.
Before?
Beforehand, and then come back and see how many yards or tons we need, because, you know, uh, they go by tons. So, I mean, if you gotta, you know, half a ton going into a six by six hole, you know, four inches deep, so, I mean, it's, it's a little bit.
To prep it, do we use a pickaxe, or?
I mean, have to use a little bucket or whatever we got to dig it out.
Spot out.
Backhoe, bucket, truck, bucket, truck hole.
So if they're not, put cones around them and then?
Yeah, basically what you gotta do, we got like four or five of them, need to be done, but turn around, me trying to be able to take off from my regular job, 'cause we're on a project and stuff, I'm on three, so.
Well, I could do the, I could drive up there and get it, you know, and bring it back and stuff like that, so.
You got your COs?
Uh, no.
I'm gonna say, you drive that truck, you ain't got COs.
You go out of town, you can drive it in town, you go out of town, you gotta have a.
Technically, by law, you can drive it inside of town, on these streets, but as soon as you hit that highway, it's D O P.
We don't have anybody but him that's got the CO.
Eric does.
Even our guy, that, more than your husband does, he may be in Texas.
So how do we coordinate digging out the holes to, to prep, to the prep?
Basically, what I do, is till it's end of the year, they're gonna quit making asphalt, so I wait until next spring. Turn around, I mean, the holes that we got chatted in right now, they're harder than brick, I mean, the one down here on Thursday's been there for three years, so it's, I mean, it's just like asphalt sitting there now, so.
It's even holding up pretty good, but the ones that's only about that wide, the ones that don't hold up, they beat the trail out of them. The big ones.
So it'd be, it'd be next spring, I mean, I put it as next spring.
We just put it on the agenda, put it next spring and get it done, and be it done. Either that, or I back it out and get it done, be done one day.
You can joker your bones if you ever did it, I mean, they're quick.
But you think there's nobody did all the big job like that, they wanna do it.
Well, it's not cost efficient enough, you know, I mean, it's not cost efficient enough, I mean, if you was laying a street, say, next year you wanna lay eight street and put that in on the ditch. Then they'll do it, and it won't cost you as much, but.
Well, city may want to get me mad over, we can't use them, they don't wanna do nothing with it no more, but I didn't have nothing to do with that, I mentioned, I was home, I was, I office. But anyhow, they used to, you began to do a little bit, they did all of our work, but now it's, you know, bid and everything, they won't do much, little small jobs, anything left. So they, they bring a big piece of equipment down here that's made for working big trees and place these pot holes, six foot square, there ain't no money. Okay, we'll get them done, I'll drive it. I think I, I don't even know what kinda lot, I got, I mean, I have none of them, but we get it over, I got two. I go more miles than you been living. Your grandson, your son tells me I better drive one of them.
It ain't so bad for you to turn around and drive a truck along, you don't get pulled over, I mean, they don't know you got CO, they'll lose some light, you know?
But that is, we do have a good dump truck, we, like, one thing that we've got through these government grants and things, or conservation, that, that we do have one good dump truck.
Right.
And Brooke Tuck's got a coming engine with a, and transmission, knowing bad things about it is the fourth. Like, that's a good. Okay, away from water. And water, white water.
Uh, all the back teeth has been coming back good on the water, uh, I am gonna be doing some dead end line flushing, uh, 'cause our chlorine level has dropped out to our minimum, and I would like to flush some lines out to get the stagnant water, I mean, still good water, just, it's quality, good quality water compared to the rest of town. Um, but I'm, uh, like I said, back teeth have been coming back good, uh, the other thing is, uh, ain't had no Waterloo's. Everything's been, I'm, uh, looking good on, on our records, there is, the town actually started using a little bit higher usage. Uh, normally we were sitting at twenty-one thousand to twenty-two thousand gallons a day, now we're sitting in about twenty-six.
But we're getting paid for it, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, it's going through people's meters, it's not coming out of the ground or anything, um, the other thing is, I don't know how that's, meters did it up there. I, our tower only comes on certain time every other day, uh, I fixed that problem, so we ain't turning the tower on every day, but there might be one day that I put three hundred and twenty gallons through the system from that meter, so it's not coming into town, but coming out of town. Um, so, uh, everything's going well, I haven't seen no issues, so.
You're right, you're right.
Nope, don't want to. With the bad one, that's the bad part with the weather, the bad, the bad part with the weather being dry, and it's like seven foot deep in the ground, it's dry, and has dust in the ground, we get, start getting a lot of rain, gonna put weight on the pipe and this will eventually start cracking. But one of the waters side, we've been doing good.
Good.
Serious side, uh, we have, uh, next March is our, I'm, uh, in the work permit for, uh, the wastewater plant, uh, have to renew it. Me and April have been working on that, turn around, and I'm, uh, getting paperwork together to fill it up, and then have to have the mayor here, put his John Hancock on there, and turn around and send it in, we get our draft, and it comes back, we see how the draft, and we like the draft, or we need to do any corrections on it, and then send it back in, and then they turn around and give us our new permit for the following three years. Um, so, uh, that's in the works right now on that. Uh, still in the process of getting a couple bids for the sewer plant, uh, have a couple issues down there and trying to resolve them.
On the road, and the light?
The lights, I got taken care of, um, he'll be down here, hopefully, he's trying to push, push it to get down here, the system's still working, it's just throwing out every few days, which I check it every day, and it's been throwing out, um, but October thirty-first, we end that, we don't have to use it no more. Anyway, he's gonna try to come in and, uh, give us a bid to re, either upgrade or repair. Uh, UV lights every year upgrade, and we're on a ballast system, so hopefully, we can see what we got going on there. Uh, the rotor, I actually got, uh, the pump company, I've been getting pumped from, they, uh, are talking about a chopper pump instead of a rotor. It actually does the same thing as a rotor does, it's cheaper, so we're trying to see what we can do with that, and, uh, what kind of bid we can get on that for him, and wait for him to get back with me with the measurements and stuff, so. Uh, other than that, that part's down, I'm working on five grinders, uh, turn around and had to replace, uh, a new one, had to buy a new one, replace it. Uh, I was here for that one, the installment, easy as pie, turn around, a lot more similar than our grinders we have now. So I'm, uh, I watched him do it and everything, uh, like I said, normally takes about three hours to put one in, this year probably be about maybe an hour put in, it's, it's crazy how quick it is.
You told him it was a zipper?
Yeah, yeah.
He did, wanted to get it in there.
Basically, you're running the wire and putting the control panel in, and you're done, so, and that's what I like about it, so. That's it on my part.
One, we have to wait for a thing, Charlie Ray was scheduled to be here, he lost his granddaughter this, this, in this week, being buried in this week. And he pretty broke up, and he called me, and I did, see you next month. I mean, family doesn't afford anything, I didn't expect him to, and he's a bad helper, so, on top of all this. So I told him, there's no problem with seeing him next month, so unless something comes up, he should be here next month to upgrade us on what's going on with these new pumps and things, or any federal money or whatever. I thought, I should call me, I don't know, Tuesday, I think, was, I was on a regular, like, like.
It was, it was last week.
Well, it, it, that's understandable, I mean, he's a family member of the law. When do you got it down on Park Cemetery, Animal Control?
Uh, cemetery, Frankie, did they haul off that dirt, or was that gonna be done?
Basically, that's gonna be, have to be a deal, we're me and Dennis just together and actually all that dirt, and take it somewhere, either down to our cemetery or something, turn around and we did it out.
Did haul some of it.
Huh?
He did.
Oh, he did haul some, huh?
At the cemetery?
Yes.
Yeah, they, I don't know how many local.
Yeah, I don't know how many local.
They can be attacked up there with the fork, you know, it's got the deeper going to look at.
I mean, I do know that he's dumped some there inside these buyouts where the foundation is selling down in the ground, making that old one part of the brush hole, so I know he's been doing that part. I don't know how much he actually leaves up there.
We have to leave some.
Yeah, I mean, we got to leave some for the gray socks, but.
Frankie, is there a, uh, across from lines, you know, where that little sinkhole thing is, I guess that's the whole foundation of a house?
Across from lines?
Yeah, corner, Sycamore, and?
That's actually a, that's actually a drain, so what happened there is, that's the safety problem coming through the highway. And then when it gets down there where that hole is, there's another drain that goes underneath the railroad tracks there, well, anyways, um, we have to watch what we do uh, on maintaining that, I mean, we can maintain a few, but when it comes to culverts underneath the railroad tracks or the highway, that's out of our litigation of.
Who's, who do you contact for that?
We have to contact in order, and, I mean, the holy self right there, we can, we can put stuff in there from mortar now, uh, like, you know, big shot rock or whatever, but if we divert the water the wrong way, then we're liable for it, so we gotta watch what we do there.
And it's got trees growing in it.
We don't have a lot of good luck getting state to do a whole lot down everything there, we've always had a problem. I, like, they got stuck in our ditch down there, and we're right to the bottom of the level, they know that, standing there, water standing there, and they hit the ditch with the tractor and got stuck, fooded out. And we always have to call them, and five little bim come down here and straight to this guy. The culvert's going up, we got culvert going on the highway, and they trying to put them on there sometimes, but we can't even touch, put up a stop sign, that's, that's their property. But now the culvert gets stopped, they're gonna go the whole way out, back to Beryl Pass, they wouldn't put that on us, it's been going over years.
So is there, like, the county load commissioner, or?
I don't know who's over what no more, I've, I've never talked to your new family.
Let me see what I can, now, they do have a new, I almost had it, he's, he's basically over this area, so I haven't talked to him personally, but apparently the cooperation is better, so let me, let me see what I can.
Okay.
The reason I bring it up is the homeowner that's on this side of the street, this client, that she's had dealing with some type of stuff that she feels is connected to that drain.
You gotta go back a little further, man, you gotta watch it, well, she got a drain that runs down the highway, we put that one, we grab a roof. And it goes under that thing, but that, I'm not getting involved in that, that ain't hard. But it's on that same roof, it's a drain, and you know a little bit about it, that's why we both know things, huh? But it is a drain that goes under there from our basement, I guess.
Yeah, it's a floor.
But it goes down that right road, go, go around that other side, and opened up outside, within the ditch out there.
Have you seen that drain, Frankie, or?
No way.
Have you seen the drain that crossed off?
It's a floor drain that goes in the basement, so anyways, technically, it's hard to, it's hard to, 'cause you had so much stuff grandfathered in, it's hard to make an issue out of an issue.
Yeah.
So, back whenever things were being done, like new housing development now, if you have a floor drain in your basement, uh, floor, it has to be connected to the sanitary sewer with a P-trap. That house was built in the fifties, probably.
Well, whoever, whoever road going to buy a house.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so, I mean, it, turn around and it's probably a floor drain, over the years you got pulled up, I'm not going out there digging the shake driveway, so.
They're, they're gonna have to do something different from that basement, but it's not hard, I mean, we do everything we can to help them and advise them, but when it gets down to physically doing, we can't do nothing, like I said, we can't even put a stop sign up, that's, that's, we can't even put our county, city, lemon sign up, they have to do it. We can't put nothing on that roof without, or nor, or, and everything, you bet it, but they put it up.
I know the engineer for the area, promote out, we're kind of friends, I'll call him up tomorrow, tell him there's an issue, I, I, I would have, we're gonna have to meet with somebody down here and look at this. 'Cause I wouldn't have an idea, but.
If any, anytime we want to come down here, be, be, if I'm available, and I'll, if I'm on the band, I'll be available.
Okay.
Nothing different, Derek, he gonna come, uh, West Point.
He's gonna be out, too. Here's things and stories I don't hear, but, no, uh.
But what I want to say is, like, every culvert, hundred sixty-one from Mayberry, the water runs over there down through, except one down there on Eighth Street.
Well, just take, for instance, the one down here, the curb down here, inside the curb, curb there, where the tractor ran off. Not being mean, but whoever designed that, the last time, turn around and made the ditch lower than the culvert, so it couldn't run, it'd just sit there. So basically, what needs happening is new culvert needs to be put across, and.
Let me put a call into him, and maybe get with you.
Have you got a?
I don't know that I do, I, I get one. But, uh, we'll be, I can get you down here, we'll meet with you on this, get, cover all the bases.
I probably have to, I probably do.
Yeah, there's, there's a few issues down here on the highway, needs to be here, actually.
I think I got your car, yes.
But, you know, if there's issues, you need to get her, I suppose.
I'll put that one there.
Animal control? Uh, Officer Corbett said that he has taken one dog to St. Jen County pound, so this month. Sorry, that was today, what did that, okay. And as far as the park, I read through the file on the park, and that information has given me some insight into some of the steps we need to proceed if we're going to move the park, uh, and.
We still are working on, uh, maybe get a committee together and work on, and see if I get a different man in touch, and see what we can do with the old parts, or there's a lot of yes and and before we move on, but, but we all want to build a new park somewhere where we can, it's visible to everybody, and everything don't get tore up and wrecked and things like that down there, there's, there's nobody to do anything down there, everybody just get tore up.
Who has the last house under right before you get it?
That, Mrs. Layton, and that is in the county, that is not in the city, same area. That's there from that ditch to that ditch, is county, and she lived there. Louie Layton, which was, uh, that was Louie, no, that was, uh, he was the liquor inspector, it wasn't Louie Layton, that was, uh, him, she, her husband, he been dead for years and years, he'd be liquor inspector, your, your, but they live in the county, that's county house. And they don't claim it, but that road, and that, it's there too, but they don't wanna claim it. The county don't want, I'm sure they don't want, 'cause it's only about twenty feet, and it's dark. But it's dark, and then, but she not into it, they, they skip her.
They have the one down there, they like runs.
Right behind them houses, they found it back there somewhere.
Well, the reason I bring it up is 'cause if, if Pete back there, someone mentioned that there are needles, uh, in the park, uh, that, that there's a way to monitor who was.
She's about eighty years old.
She's an older, she's an older.
Maybe, I might cherish her dinner, if it didn't.
I think she had.
I seen.
She lady didn't have something to do.
Yeah, she's up there, yeah.
Still works, you know it, Laola, no, not Laola, that's.
That's Norma.
Norma later.
She's very nice lady.
I gotta call from everyone come on about two, I don't know.
So I guess we'll pursue being a committee together.
Yeah, well, uh, I, I would, I'd like to be at least one citizen involved, a couple of, uh, viewers, dear men, and, uh, I mean, one, one or two young, anybody that wants to volunteer, but, but the main thing we gotta do is try to figure out where we want to put a new one. That, that's gonna be the main thing, in the ground, and we got all kind of bio ground, but that's why bio ground floods. Of course, some of it don't really flood all the time, but it, it's in the level. So that's the thing we gotta work on, get together, I don't, if I can get your hand down, I need to be on the committee, it could help a lot, 'cause she knows a lot about flood zones and more of that.
Is that FEMA buyouts you're talking about there?
Yeah, they're FEMA buyout.
You better talk to me about, I'm floodplain manager, and
It's here.
For the county.
Yeah.
And there's, they get kind of pretty big, so, FEMA buyout.
There would be no building going, there would be a pavilion, and then stuff like that, but, uh, I know, I've done with the fire department, she needs to be educated on that buyout property, anyway.
You need help with that, I'll be going to help you on that, too.
No problem. Yeah, I know they got all kind of restrictions, and they get there every day. Anything else?
That's all I have.
And anything you like, thanks.
Um, you know, we talked about it, um, we did finish doing the signatures on the contract for the, what they call it, the R O funding about for the Franklin drips, so that's gonna happen tomorrow. Yeah, working with them, it can be kind of slow, but, but it's definitely made that one step into its, its official, so, you know, we're making moves forward on this.
It'll happen, we know it, we, we, we know it will happen, that's it.
And the new bridge, do you know anything about the new bridge, uh, by Chester, going across the river, or?
That's Perry County.
Yeah, that's the. Yeah, yes, though.
Well, I did hear about it, uh, I mean, I, I think it's a shade behind schedule, but not too, too bad. There was a hang up, I thought it was a hang up with someone, I don't know if it was corp engineered or somebody, they got a little bit of delay on it, but I think it's, I think they're already starting to they're either starting to, or they're about to start, uh, on one of the piers.
I think they are, I went over at Sunday, and then they got a board out there, and I think they're driving the bottom to
Yeah, they're, they really wanna get, get, take it back to the lower.
Down, down, down.
This is the time to do it, so.
They're paying the money.
Two or four lane?
I don't know.
I think it's an issue.
I think, you make it two, but whatever, it's, it's a river that holds there.
I know, I sure, I know.
Is there a design anywhere that, that's true?
I saw one somewhere, I'll have to look it up and see, uh, there's a baseball case, I might get a photograph of it, Jim.
Parkland don't break on ninety-three level to you, is it? Well, that was forty-three something, that's true. Anything else? Nobody got a last chance, I'm gonna make you go home.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Would you make that on favor?
Aye.
Four, never had a four yet.